Well, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council this Monday, March 16, 2020. It's after 7:30 PM. Next meeting will be April 6, 2020 unless circumstances dictate otherwise. I never thought at this stage in my life that we would have circumstances such as what brings most people tonight. And I'm glad you're here, but I find the irony that the very purpose or the very reason you're here tonight is because the governor didn't want people to gather in large groups. So I find that ironic, but I'm glad you're here and I understand you're here and certainly my thoughts and prayers go to you because I know what it's like to be a small business person and it's tough enough to make a buck and then when they undercut your ability to do so, it's even tougher. So I know the administration has worked on some things that might be helpful and we certainly will be looking forward to hearing from you all. And it's really quiet out there. I never thought the zombie apocalypse would actually be triggered by a small microbe that we couldn't see because it's even like the animals and the birds have been quiet these last few days and certainly the traffic is less. So hopefully this new normal is a short new normal, but time will tell. And just as a point of Mr. Meyer's going to be here telephonically, that's a, I'm not sure, a reasonable facsimile of him.
He never looks so.
He won't be counted in terms of attendance for quorum purposes and he will not be voting on any issues. I don't have a problem with him chiming in on anything that he feels necessary. Certainly his constituents, you know, deserve representation if he feels obligated. But I think conferring with Mr. Scavelli and having had 32-plus years of being a solicitor for various municipalities, I don't think there is anything that has ever approved of being able to vote telephonically at the moment. It's all required to be done in purpose, in person. Tonight's kind of an experiment to see how this might work out if in the future we might be required to not meet in person. So, well, if you're there, give us a holler there, Mr. Myers.
I'm here. I'm here, President Biden.
All right. Well, welcome. You know, this disembodied voice, we'll still recognize it. Anyways, if you would, Mr. Paul, please call the roll.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bestancet.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers is absent. Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
And we do have a quorum and the agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I would ask you to join the members of city council in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First order of business is to approve the minutes of March 2, 2020. So anyone wish to?
So move, Mr. President.
Thank you for making the motion to approve. Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The minutes of March 2, 2020 are approved. And I will have to note, we have a different lineup. I'm usually looking down when to see Mr. Cavan. He isn't usually this, at this end, so welcome. Ms. Warden is where she normally is, kinda in the middle. And then Mr. Silvestri is usually closer, so little change up because we're gonna try to have this online on Facebook. So, you know, not only a new normal, but the brave new world of videoing this meeting At this point in time, communications from the mayor. Welcome, Mayor. I know that most people are here with regard to the issue of the restaurants closing and maybe what things that the administration has discussed as to maybe in some way help them out and be able to provide carryout and some other things for them. Hopefully not to steal your thunder, there'll be something with regard to limited time parking so that people can come in and out, so they, those that do decide to stay open can have means for people to park in front of their business and come in and get the order that they've made. So, welcome and the floor is all yours.
Thank you, President Biden, back and council members. Yes, these are definitely unusual circumstances and we were, we'll just work to get through along with everybody else. Just to bring you up to speed with what the city of Worcester, our operations are at this point, our core mission or core purpose, safety forces, police and fire are both operational and open. We have limited visitors to both of those because we don't want somebody bringing in some illness with them. So people can make appointments with each of the departments if they need to, but we have canceled any tours and things like that. So it's really just safety services as a business. We also are, one of our other core missions is providing utility. So our water plant is open, fully operational and safe to drink. Our wastewater treatment plant is operational and safe for the people working down there. And so those two, or those four critical areas of our city are under normal operations. The Worcester Community Center was open until the end of business today and the governor has said that he wants all community centers along with other type of activities closed as of the end of the day. So our community center will be closed from now moving forward until we're able to reopen again under state law. Just wanted to bring you up to speed on sort of things that we feel are important. First off, our city website, worsteroh.com. We have links to all of these which hopefully will be helpful to our public in trying to find out information about this coronavirus. One of the links is to our community-owned hospital, Worcester Community Hospital. They list six things to, six daily habits to fight off the disease, physical contact, avoid close contact, wash hands and keep them clean, avoid touching your face unless you have washed your hands, have a cough or cold, you know, utilize Kleenexes and such means to sneeze into clean surfaces and if you're feeling sick, stay home. They said the signs and symptoms of COVID-19 are fever greater than 100.4 degrees Fahrenheit, tiredness and body aches, a dry cough and shortness of breath. So if you have those kinds of symptoms, then you want to keep close watch as to how severe those become. If you have mild symptoms, they say stay home and take care of it just like any other illness. If you have worsening symptoms, call your doctor first, your primary care provider and tell them and they'll advise you what you should do. If you feel you need to take it a step farther, you can do a virtual visit, WH, Worcester Community Hospital, WCH Today Care app is available for that. Call the Ohio Department of Health at 1-833-427-5634. Severe symptoms, call the emergency department and describe them and they will advise whether you need to come in or not, or call 911. So, so those are things that are happening from the hospital world. From the Ohio Department of Health, as of today's date, there are 50 confirmed cases of the coronavirus in the state of Ohio. 12 counties are involved with active cases and 14 are the number of hospitalizations in Ohio. The closest Worcester has, Worcester has no confirmed cases right now. Wayne County has no confirmed cases of the coronavirus. The closest is Medina has two, Stark has three, and Summit has two, and there are none in action. So, so that's where we are in our state. As far as the national government, there are about close to 3,500 total cases. Over 3,000 of those are under investigation. So confirmed cases, travel-related, there are 205, and close contact, 214. So, so the vast majority is still in, under investigation. So that just gives you a brief idea of what to look for if you're concerned or people you talk to are concerned about the coronavirus. So, we have had a meeting with Main Street. Shannon Waller and John from the Main Street office met with us today and talked about the directive that came out of the governor's office that all restaurants and bars are to be closed until further notice, except for any type of carryout or takeout food. I know that's going to be a huge hardship to everybody sitting in this room or the majority of people sitting in this room. So we talked today about what we as a city might be able to do to help that situation. And one of the things that we could help or offer is to help provide parking, a short-term nature, right in front of the business so that if people order carryout food, they can have a place to stop, quickly go in, pay for the food and bring it out and head on their way. So we are making up placard signs at city expense to place in front of the businesses, keeping the parking space or two right in front of the business open for this takeout and carryout food service. So I know we should have a number of maybe two to four by tomorrow morning and then I think we have a total of eight ordered right now and we'll order more if we need to. So unfortunately, our hands are tied by the governor's edict on having bars and restaurants closed. So I'm sure a lot of these people would like to talk to council on that. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mr. Biden, to lead that conversation. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think they also like to talk to the administration since the administration probably has the most immediate means of affecting certain changes, especially in the downtown area with respect to parking. So before, what we're gonna do, there's no petitions at the moment. Before I get to the downtown business owners, I am gonna recognize Terry and Bev Raiber who have a annexation.
Pre-annexation agreement.
They want to annex and as we do here, we have a, usually ask people to do a pre-annexation agreement with the city, especially if we're gonna extend services prior to them actually annexing into the city. So I will recognize one or both of you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's Terry Raiber. We're just here to do the pre-annexation agreement with the city. We're building a new house. It's 2150 Oak Hill Road. It's one of the county lots that's inside the city limits and they no longer allow septic systems, so we're tying into the city services, building a new house.
Yeah, there's a little section there that I know is, I know Nelson, just a little further down, is not in the city. So it's tough, you're kind of handcuffed to do anything with that without coming in.
And what, before it was approved for septic, but the EPA this year changed the rules that no new septic's within the city limits. Anyone within the city has to tie in to existing sewer and water. So that's what we're here for, to go from county into the city.
All right.
Robert Reynolds is our attorney that's gonna finish the process after the pre-annexation agreement. And they said, I don't know how long it takes, three, six months or something till it's all, till they're done with whatever they do. That's why I have him doing it.
By signing this agreement, we can extend the water and sewer prior to you actually.
Yes, that's what it's for. So we can, because we were ready to start pulling permits to build the house. And then they found out this change. So we had to do this so that they can continue with building the house. So we had to do this to move forward.
Yeah, I know someone that was closely connected with the city who had to annex into the city, but his name will remain nameless.
He's been helpful with the process because that's what I pulled his record to see what to even do.
We're not gonna need names though.
Anything else?
That's it, just here to enter into the agreement.
Okay.
I guess you guys vote on it.
Yep. Yes, we do.
So is that it?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, you know, we're interested in a hearing from you business owners as to what ideas you might have with regard to what the city can do administratively or legislatively to help your businesses out during this moratorium on being able to open. Any, anyone? I mean, would you just state your name and the business you own there?
I'm Glenn Grubling from Broken Rocks. This is a fluid situation for sure because I was not planning on being here when I got up this morning. It's all sort of happened today. So, I mean, we realize there's a limit to what anybody in the city can do and we're appreciative for signs. I can tell you just from this morning, my calculus has shifted from what I thought we could do and what I might do in a couple of days, just based on lack of sales through carryout. We actually did less carryout today than we do on a normal day. So I don't know how long we can keep that up and be open and, you know, so we're, we look at it as, you know, and I assume this is going from everybody I've talked to, we've had similar situations. And I, and this is only downtown restaurants represented here. And I know there's a bunch of more restaurants in town and I drove down Bell before I came here and even, you know, the carryout pizza places with drive-throughs, there was nobody in those drive-throughs. So they're probably always making the same calculations that we are, that, ooh, this is tough and what do we do? You know, collectively, I think we just figured downtown, it's 250 employees that don't have jobs since last night sometime. And so I assume it's over 1,000 at least in the greater area. So, you know, we just want to keep on the front of your minds. And I mean, a lot of our concerns go to at this point, well, if we close, you know, all of us probably found out the same thing over the last few months, that loss of business insurance specifically excludes viruses. So all this insurance we had to continue to pay employees and all of those sort of things, it's just out the window. We're in uncharted territory. So, you know, I think, and somebody else can comment if they think I disagree, but often what we're looking for now is like, well, how do we take care of our employees and what can we do going down the road to make sure that whatever money's become available that aren't, Worcester isn't missing out and the people that are basically out of a job right now with no notice can get those funds. And we, you know, we're all, we all cook food, deliver food, make food. I've not ever laid off anybody in 20 years of doing this. So going through the process of how do we get our employees even on unemployment, it's all, it's Greek to me. So I spent the morning reading that. It's just kind of, I mean, I know that, like I said, the city jumped on and did those signs, but as I told Justin, well, I don't know that that's really necessary because there was plenty of parking on Main Street today. You know, there wasn't a lot of, there weren't a lot of cars down there. And, and this is before we have any cases in Worcester. What happens when, oh, we have five cases in Worcester and people get scared. So I don't know, I don't know how long, I mean, I'm looking at by Wednesday making a decision if we're just gonna lock the door and wait it out. But we always thought, we thought you guys should know that's, you know, that's what's going on. It's like, it's like a giant factory closing all of a sudden in town. It's gonna make an economic impact for all of us. So, did I miss anything? Amy? Amy. I mean, that's kind of.
That's for.
What's that? Oh, yeah, I mean, obviously we're also, there's two of us who have restaurants where the, where the streetscaping is going on. And, you know, the signage they did for the last years, all those places are out of business, so they're probably somewhat inadequate for that, although we now have this overriding coronavirus which makes defense seem pretty minimal. But I know that access to businesses was gonna be an issue, but whether we're, whether we're open at the end of the week, that I don't know. Anything else?
Also, beyond.
Do you want to come up and? You gotta, I know you and I've known you a long time, Patrice, but you still need to.
I'm Patrice Smith. I'm from, I'm from Spoon Market in Delhi. And also, if there are any resources that the city may have to help us navigate as far as assistance, not a handout, assistance to what state offers, I would think like the city would know more than how we can navigate that. So whatever is out there, yeah.
All right.
Permits for, come on, Amy. This is Ms. Amy.
Hi, I'm Amy Crossland from Ms. Amy's Bakery, which is not downtown, but I'm still in Worcester. I just wanted to know if there's anything you can do about helping with like, or if we all stay open. We're trying to think outside of the box here. So we're thinking kind of like open air, like food trucks and trailers and things like that. So I was wondering if there's anything that you all can do with like opening advertising and operating food trucks and maybe like leniency on permits or pushing them through of like where we can put food trucks or open them or like zoning on signage, like that we don't have to move our sign like every, however many days it is or all that stuff.
So actually, we met with our zoning in our building this morning and came up with a process so that you wouldn't have to worry about any of that, to be lenient on that.
So just anywhere and everything?
I wouldn't say that would be asked because if you're planning on doing that, contact us and they'll walk you through that, you know, but you won't be going through a typical permit process or anything like that. We just want to know where, location and that kind of thing so that we can just help guide that a little bit, but there won't be any hindrances or time restrictions or anything like that, at least during this current time.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Ashley Brenneman. I'm with Omaha Bob's Barbecue. My husband and I are looking into taking over for Bob soon as he makes his way out. But we had some questions about the construction that's going on currently in that parking lot in front of the store and like the Tulip Pond and like kind of the chains, the chain of businesses right there. I know Glenn mentioned that it's kind of maybe probably promising that something major might happen soon and we might not even be able to run for a couple of weeks, who knows? But if we're somehow still able to, Omaha Bob's would push a lot of carryout and hopefully somehow delivery as well. But with our carryout situation, I feel that it almost looks like you can't get to the store. And then the only really solid answer to that is the alley that's opened with a side door into the shop. So I guess my question is just, what does that construction look like? Will we be able to kind of like take photos of the alley and say, you know, if you're coming to pick up your, your carryout order, you can, this is a door option for you, but the main front is still open, but you, I mean, we are looking into ripping up that sidewalk. So I was just, I wanted to bring that to light to kind of get you guys thinking about, I don't know. Yeah.
So we've already altered the schedule based on our meeting this morning and to take that piece out of it for now at least, or delay that so that will be open and we can do additional signage out there on the fence in the area to say this is open.
Okay.
Because we know that alley could affect you guys and Glenn as well.
Yeah.
And so Roger, our city engineer, is, he's been meeting with the people immediately adjacent to help, he will be coming down and explaining exactly, everything's gonna be open, ask what you need to keep that open so that we can facilitate that.
That's helpful. Thank you.
And there will be parking spaces highlighted back in the South Buckeye Lot for, specifically for Omaha Bob's and the Steakhouse because, and Tulip Pond because those don't have parking rights available.
Okay.
Well, the Steakhouse does, but I think they'll also utilize their rear takeout.
Okay. Thank you. Hi, Bob.
Justin Stalin with the Chamber and just wanted to, had the opportunity to meet with these folks at 11 o'clock today. Everybody's needs are a little bit different, right? I know Omaha Bob's was talking about access to the back, that you wanted access to the alley and then Glenn said, well, let's just keep the construction moving. So each, each need is unique. I'm gonna give props to the city admin for being responsive to the small businesses and really taking this serious. And just to continue to challenge you guys to listen to what the unique requests are because they are. Each person is gonna make a decision over the next couple of days if they're gonna make a run of it or if they're not, if they're gonna shut down. One of the challenges, we've got great resources through our social media. So tomorrow, I know we'll start collectively, Main Street, Chamber. It'd be great if the city could get on to that as far as getting the word out about, about carryout. So just continue to be positive support network for this group.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, not that we would normally advertise, but if we can put something on our own website about those that are open and how to get there, especially the ones that are kind of locked in with the construction there on the southeast quadrant, but, and those of you watching, support our downtown restaurants, get a carryout. And, you know, it's too bad it isn't a little warmer because I could see shutting down Liberty for, you know, a couple of days where, you know, I don't know if open air dining is permissible under the rules, but that would certainly be one if the weather was nice, but a nice novelty to, because I know when, I hate to say Italy, but when I say Italy, a lot of, a lot of the streets at times are shut down and they, the restaurants bring tables out and people dine outside. So, you know, as someone said, we need to think outside the box. I don't know, the other thought is, I don't know what people think an appropriate length of time to permit parking because we certainly want, don't, if you're open for business, we certainly don't want people spending a great length of time when someone who could be coming, either come in on the fly or someone's already ordered, is trying to get their food. So hopefully, I know the police, I'm sure, have a lot of other things to do and I'm sure some of them are really jammed up with taking care of their school-aged children, but if we can at least keep somewhat of a presence. But if we can at least keep somewhat of a presence downtown, it'd be appreciated just so that people know we're still trying to keep some business flowing to you folks. And those who think they can park with impunity will hopefully find out that they will get ticketed, because, you know, this is more than just a parking space. This is, this is trying to at least help people limp along until this moratorium is lifted. So, so if you have ideas as you go on, let us know, let the administration know. And again, those watching, support our downtown restaurants. They're putting out a lot of good food, you just can't eat there. So when you're tired of the 50 pounds of pasta that you've stored up on, because that's what they told you to do, treat yourself to a downtown meal. Yes, Bill?
I know what you guys are going through, because in my day job, I'm the general manager of the Farmer Boy Restaurant. And I found out the same time you guys did yesterday. Came into work, I didn't even know they were thinking about closing the restaurants, and I, I come in and everybody's talking about it. And I'm, I was shocked. And then when the word came down, we were just dumbfounded. As of yesterday, I have roughly 40 full and part-time employees. And some of them are the sole supporters of the family. I've got several servers like that with children. I've got one in particular has three children, she's a server. And I have a husband and wife couple that they are the, our place is their only job. And so everybody was just, it was really a hard thing to do yesterday. So I know exactly what you guys are going through. We've never come, of course, none of us ever come across anything like this, so you really don't know what to tell your people, except, you know, see what you can do with unemployment. And we really can't offer them a whole lot. We don't have the resources to say pay them for a while. I know most of you, if not all of you, can't do that. And myself, for the first time in my life, I'm going to be on unemployment. And it's a hard thing to do. And I really feel for everybody out there. Just wanted to let you know that at least one of us up there has been through this, has gone through this too, so, we know. So, but thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And hopefully, someone in the administration can kind of be a spear point to figure out the mecha-nations that the state and the federal government's putting together to help steer them. Hopefully, our representative, Mr. Wiggum can, you know, work with you folks to, to help all of these people, because, you know, without us pulling together, we wouldn't be much of a city. And we've always seemed to rally in the past, but never had anything quite this cataclysmic. So I appreciate you all coming and you're in my thoughts and prayers. Like I said, I, I'm not affected at the moment, because I do tax returns this time of year, so I got more business than I probably need. But, you know, I, I see the empty downtown. I was down here Sunday, and there was virtually no one downtown. There's usually cars, but, so I, I just hope this comes and goes as fast as it's been imposed upon us all, and especially you, you guys are bearing the brunt of it. Anyone have anything else? Well, thank you for coming, and you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I, I certainly appreciate you taking time out to come and at least give us ideas and at least show your support for the other downtown restaurateurs. And like I say, order carryout tomorrow if possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we have any committee reports, nor do we have public hearings. We do have one item of unfinished business. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders. Ordinance number 2020 day 01 is on its third reading. Before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, I will ask Mr. Apollo to please read the title.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 01. An ordinance to approve and adopt current replacement pages to the codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we've had three readings of this. It was all fairly benign information and changes, but hopefully everyone's had a chance to go through it, see what they are. And if there's no further questions or comments, I would motion to approve ordinance 2020 dash 01.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Any other comments, Harry? Pretty straightforward. This is what's going to be required by the Ohio Revised Code to, to let our local ordinances mirror those. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancik?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2020 day 01 passes. That brings us to new business, and the first reading is the ordinance number 2020 day 09, pre-annexation agreement. We've done these before. It's pretty perfunctory. In order for anyone outside the Worcester City limits to get the extension of water and sewer services, we, prior to annexation, we request that, or it's mandated that they enter into these pre-annexation agreement. The heart of it is that if they fail to do the annexation on their own, if I recall, that they nominate, I think the mayor to file an annexation on their behalf. Most people follow through since water and sewer is pretty important. Mr. Kobelarsik? But I digress. So if you would please read the title of Resolution number 2020 day 09, I'd appreciate it, Mr. Apollo.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 09. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with certain property owners for the purpose of facilitating the annexation and extension of utility services to those properties and declaring an emergency.
And I look afar. Mr. Sylvester, the floor is yours.
Yes, I am here. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to one of the property owners, Mr. Raber, for coming up and explaining the situation. It is pretty straightforward. I did some checking. There are nine properties to the west of Oak Hill between Brookway and Nelson. One of those is already in the city, as far as I could tell, and it's the one that would split, so there's four properties above that and four properties below that are not. And this would be the second in that line of homes that would be annexed, that would be, not annexed, they would be pre-annexed, you could say, into the city. So this is just the pre-annexation agreement, as it was said. So this is us as a body saying that we can and will provide utilities should you petition for annexation. It is the pre-annexation agreement. So as it was already stated, because of new EPA regulations, this is really the, the only course of action for the Rabers. So I, I am looking for approval this evening, and with that, I would move for adoption.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancik?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion for adoption, Mr. President.
Mr. Sylvester moves to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancik?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2020 day 09 passes. Well, Rabers, welcome soon to be newest members of the city of Worcester, so. We're glad we can help you out, and hopefully you'll find that we're pretty good folks here in the city.
Thank you.
All right, you have a good evening now.
You too.
That brings us to Resolution number 2020 dash 16. It will be presented by Mr. Bastancik, and my notes indicated it's budgeted, so we will not have to suspend the rules and can vote this in tonight. Before I get to you, Mr. Bastancik, I will look to Mr. Apollo and ask her again to please read the title.
Resolution number 2020 dash 16. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the placement of sidewalks along Sunset Lane, Armstrong Drive, and Highland Park, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bastancik, the floor is yours.
Thank you. That pretty much says it all. There's not much to add, except that we applied for funding for this from the Ohio State, what is it called? Ohio State Funds for...
Safe Routes to Schools.
Safe Routes to Schools, thanks. We applied, did that back in 2018. We received a fund. In fact, ODOT's covering 100% of the costs at $280,000. And great, it's a great, it's really good to have those sidewalks in now, or will be in, and pretty much a no-brainer. I move for adoption, unless there's some questions.
Well, you can move to adopt, and if we have a motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancik, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Warden. Now, if anyone has any discussion or questions, the man's here, Mr. Kobelarsik is here, and nice to see you. Seeing none, then would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancik?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Resolution number 2020 day 16 passes, and, you know, this is a, has been a good deal
for the city of Worcester to get sidewalks for a very low cost, and nothing does my heart good than to see people walking about on a, a nice day, and without sidewalks, you don't see that, so. And it makes the routes to school safer, hence the title of the program. But it's nice that everyone can avail themselves of it. That brings us to Resolution number 2020 day 17. It again will be presented by Mr. Bastancik, but this is also, this one requires three readings unless the rules are suspended. And it also requires me to ask Mr. Apollo to please read the title.
Resolution number 2020 dash 17. A resolution approving the report of the Assessment Equalization Board on objections concerning the estimated special assessments for the West Highland Road reconstruction project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bastancik, the floor is yours.
Thank you. A few meetings ago, we did establish this three-person panel to hear any possible objections to the Sunset Lane assessments, or for a separate panel for, same people, but a separate panel for the north of the, the West Highland reconstruction. There were no objections filed on, for the Sunset Lan- Sunset Lan- Lane reconstruction, but there were a total of 10 objections filed for the Highland Avenue reconstruction. The panel decided that the south side of Highland, I'll just, of Highland without, without, without direct access to Highland, shall have their assessment reduced by 10%. And then all properties on the north side of Highland will receive a credit for the amount of assessed for the 2016 Safe Route to School sidewalk improvements. They found that they would have been assessed already for those. So they will receive full credit for that. Any discussion?
Well, if you want...
Well, I would first like to make a move, make a move, motion to go to third and final, I'm just...
Yes, and I, I think that's wise. We had a good equalization board, and at this point in time, I would hate to ask people to serve on a board and then try to second-guess their judgment. It looks like they were pretty judicious as it was. So, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Bastancik, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancik?
Yes.
And the rules are suspended. I turn to you again, Mr. Bastancik.
Just a quick thing before I make a motion to adopt. Just want to thank the three members of the, of the board. Bob Metz, or Metzi, Steve Webster, and Robert Kastner. I'm sure we all appreciate their time and efforts in this. And it's a non-paying position, so.
And having...
It is, it's nice to see people step up and do this.
Having served on one, I know it's a thankless task, but I know that men that were, that served, you know, did it judiciously and intelligently and with the best interest of all parties in mind. So that being said...
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancik, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Any other questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancik?
Yes.
Resolution number 2020 day 17 passes. This is turning into the Mr. Bastancik show. The next one will be presented by Mr. Bastancik. It's Resolution number 2020 dash 18. It is a budgeted item. Before I get back to you, Mr. Bastancik, I will ask Mr. Apollo to please read the title.
Resolution number 2020 dash 18. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the reconstruction of a portion of West Highland Road and declaring an emergency.
And just so you know, I know it's a fairly long title. If I can get the most recent resolution that was passed, if I can sign it before she gets done with it, so.
Is that the goal?
Yeah, that's the goal. So, Mr. Bastancik, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. This is something we've seen several times before. We've already approved the funds for it, and we also approved a resolution of necessity back in 2003 piece of legislation, and this is just a vote to go ahead and bid out the project.
All right, so I, did I hear a motion to adopt?
Since it's...
Budgeted?
Budgeted. I, motion, motion to adopt.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancik, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Any other questions? I mean, pretty straightforward, we, we need to, if we're going to construct something, we budgeted, we need to go out for bids, so. Although Mr. Kobelarsik waits with bated breath for that magic question. Seeing none, you're off the hook this time around, at least on this piece of legislation. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancik?
Yes.
Resolution number 2020 dash 18 passes. We have Resolution number 2020 dash 19, and oh my, look, Mr. Bastancik will be presenting it. It is a budgeted item, so again, it will not require suspension of the rules, but but does require Ms. Apollo to read the title, if she would please.
Resolution number 2020 dash 19. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the reconstruction of Sunset Lane and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bastancic, I turn the floor over to you again.
Thank you. This is practically the same as the previous legislation, just, just a different project. We already voted for the funds and we also voted for the resolution of necessity. And we're just looking for a vote to approve, to be able to go out and bid on the project. And I would like to make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic, is there a second?
Second.
Second by someone, Ms. Warden. I couldn't, that was so close, I couldn't break the tie.
Neck and neck.
Yep. Any, any other questions?
I have a question. Mr. Kobelarsik, can you tell me when plans, I mean, I know this is just to go out for bid, but do you have any timeline of when construction on this project would begin? I know that that's a really.
We were going to wait until school was out.
I was going to say, now there's probably no need, maybe.
It all depends on what happens in the next, you know, by the time we advertise and open bids, it'll be three weeks from now.
Okay.
So if school's in session, then it'll be during the summer. When school's not in session, that will complete the project. If they're not in session, then of course they'll start as soon as they, you know, as soon as they're able.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? It's nice hearing from you, Mr. Kobelarsik. I appreciate you showing up. I would have felt bad, you would have sat that whole time in silence. Here, here you became the star that I know you are.
He loves to come to these, I've been told.
Yeah, I know. He's quite the talker, you know. Any other questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2020 day 19 passes. And we'll hear from a new council person, Mr. Ansel. And that'll sound like I'm repeating myself. Resolution number 2020 day 20. It is also a budgeted item, so will not require suspension of the rules. It's our annual agreement for services by the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office to prosecute misdemeanors in municipal court that, of people who have cited under municipal ordinances. But before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I'll turn for one last time this evening and ask Ms. Apollo to please read the title.
Resolution number 2020 dash 20. A resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement with the Wayne County Commissioners for the prosecution of municipal ordinances by the Wayne County Prosecutor and for payment for such services and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, I'm proud to introduce this piece of legislation annually. It really highlights the partnership that we have with the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. And I want to compliment Attorney Lutz as well as Attorney Scavelli for their mutual cooperation. And it was interesting to read the historical commentary. I'm sure you enjoyed it too, John. But without going into all the details, it is a pretty colorful agreement that has evolved 44 years ago, so it has a legacy of success. So this will be the 44th year of this ongoing agreement where we subcontract the misdemeanor prosecution in the court system through the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. I'm very proud of the fact that we have two seasoned attorneys representing the city of Worcester in these cases with 10 and four years respectively. The value for the 50% approximately amount of the caseload represents the city of Worcester. So we are getting a very good value when we look at the volumes that they're prosecuting on an annual basis. And this year, not only Worcester, but the other political subdivisions that the prosecutor represent is proposing a 5% increase that is $3,999. So roughly the cost of living with the opus and the wage adjustments for the prosecutors. It's a slam dunk deal. It's a great value to the city and we thank the county commissioners as well as the county prosecutor for their ongoing willingness to work and support us through this process. So with that being noted, and it is a budgeted item, I'm going to motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Any questions or discussion?
I would just direct one to Mr. Scavelli. Are you, are you satisfied with, with the level of service that we're receiving from the county?
Yes, we are. What I hear from the police is that currently things are going, doing, going very well. We, we haven't really got any complaints. I will tell you, as somebody who's done this kind of work for quite some time, it would be difficult for us to keep the same level of service for the same price through the city that we get within. I'm not saying we couldn't come close, but it would be pretty really, it'd be very, very tough. So it's, it's a good price for the service that we're receiving. I'm very happy with it and I really have nothing else to add outside of that. I would tell you that they've been doing a good job and it's a good price.
There, there's no long lag wait times or anything like that you have as far as service?
We, the, the places where that had been occurring, I believe that we have addressed them and we've addressed them in such a way that has solved the problems and we no longer have those problems. I have, any problems we have had, I have a very easy time calling Mr. Lutz whenever we have a problem. He's very responsive and he handles those problems directly and very quickly.
All right, thank you.
President Biden, Mr. Myers, I just wanted to weigh in. I, I support this ordinance. I know I'm not voting this evening, but I did reach out to Mr. Ansel, who is the sponsor, to let him know that I think this was a nominal increase. And in fact, if I had the power, I'd probably provide, I'd ask for even a greater increase. I think they do a great job. And I just wanted to let everybody know that I did a bunch of research on this previously and we're getting a very good deal compared to some other municipalities who share prosecuting services with other jurisdictions. So I just wanted to give my two cents worth that I do support this.
All right. If I could add one more thing to, to sort of bolster this a little bit. We do have a 5% increase, but I will tell you that one of the most, the biggest difficulties that county prosecutors have is keeping prosecutors because they don't have enough money to give them raises and make their pay commensurate with the experience and what they could get in other places. Increasing the amount that we pay helps them do that, even, but not really even that greatly, but it does help. And it behooves the city to keep experienced prosecutors representing us in court. And so I, I really do encourage you to go ahead and vote for this. Ms. Warden?
Thank you. Actually, this, this question's for Mr. Dordia. Is the, sorry. Is the 5% increase built into our budget? Is that unexpected?
Probably 3% of the budget, but we'll be able to squeeze out that other 2% of the budget somewhere.
Is that something that you can build into budgets going forward then, at 5%? I mean.
That could do, but.
Perhaps it could go up, but.
Mr. Bastancic?
We do not get charged for the felony cases? How does that work?
Well, so there are different responsibilities. So felony cases are handled by the county. That's their jurisdiction. Municipal court cases, so that's your misdemeanors, are, would be our jurisdiction. So normally, that would be the city's responsibility to handle that prosecution. That is not the case because we contract that responsibility with the county. But felony cases are not ours.
Right, and, and these are misdemeanors that we charge under our codified ordinances and not misdemeanors charged under the Ohio Revised Code.
Correct.
Yeah, so. And the reason sometimes we don't charge under the Ohio Revised Code misdemeanors if there's jail time involved, the municipality has to pay for the cost of keeping the defendant or then the person that's been convicted for their stay in jail, so. So there are certain things that it makes it economically not in our best interest to, to charge, but a lot of the other things that don't involve jail time, such as motor vehicle type violations, because we also then get part of the fines or cons, or part of the fines.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we couldn't do this on our own with someone as an employee for really any less. And the only other way would be to maybe find someone to do it on an independent contractor basis. The problem here in Wayne County in terms of, it's not a problem, it's a logistics problem is we have multiple days when there's arraignments. So most municipalities that contract to a third party, they only have to show up one day each week for arraignment. Here, it would require someone to come down multiple days for arraignment and that, then it makes it really cost prohibitive because they, they'll have to charge us for those additional days. Because we, we've looked at it, so we are getting a good deal and Mr. Lutz has done a, a good job in recent years of keeping the municipal prosecutors, so. Hopefully, we continue to have this good relationship and that. Just want to add a little bit of historical nuance. When I started practicing law here in late 1988, this was the municipal court and had all the ambiance of a bus station. And where Mr. Monet's office in that area was, and I see Chief nodding his head, was the muni prosecutor's office, so. So, but this, they had these, they had these fiberglass seats that were on a rail, so they weren't movable, so. It, it was truly an ugly courtroom. So this has been very nice once they moved out and we had an opportunity to turn it into a single purpose for our purposes, for the city's purposes only, so. That's a blast from my past. Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Well, resolution 2020 day 20 passes. That brings us to the miscellaneous portion, and I will start out with Mr. Sanders.
I just want to remind everyone that on April 6th, obviously, we're still allowed to meet or not. But if we are allowed, we will be meeting at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. It'll be a combined laws and ordinances and finance committee meeting to hear from the industry leaders in our community regarding the workforce housing requirements.
All right. Looking forward to that. Mr. Silvestri?
Yes, I just happened to check the city website and under the coronavirus notice or memorandum that the city posted there, it, it said there's no change to current city council meetings and it talks about the April 6th meeting and says that there's a meeting prior to that at 6:30. So that must be incorrect on the city website.
Should be 6.
Should be 6.
We planned for it at 6:00.
Actually, and that also segues me into my second question. I know, based on the things that we heard from the president today and from the governor today, there, and from the CDC, et cetera, et cetera, there seemed to be a little bit of ambiguity as to what the guidance was in terms of gathering size recommend, recommendations. And I know, based on the city's position and the information that the administrative team and the mayor has put out on the city website, our social distancing is about six feet, I think is what we said. And I could only surmise that the spacing of the chairs is supposed to be a little bit indicative of that, even though it might not be completely there. But I just wanted to ask in terms of, I've been asked the question, in terms of gatherings, whether it be, you know, a community group or what have you, what is Worcester's position? If you're not prepared to answer that definitively right now, that's fine. I've just heard things everywhere from 50 and under to 10 and under. Where does Worcester stand on that locally, I guess, as far as a recommendation?
I believe from the research I've conducted, 50 and under is what the, the CDC is recommending. 10 and under is what the governor has proposed in today's statement is what he's driving for, so. That, that's, I believe, a correct analysis and if others know better, please, yeah, correct me, so.
So obviously, we are under our governor, so we would recommend no groups of beyond 10, even though, truth be told, tonight.
So in two weeks, if it remains the same, we'll be canceling our public meeting?
We've been updating the website daily.
Done a very good job.
Every day, there's a, a new notice either by the CDC or the governor's office or the president, so. And we say right at the beginning that we'll follow that as much as we can, so.
But those size of groups are recommendations, they're not mandates, like the closing of the restaurant.
I think the 10 is a recommendation. I thought the 50 was a mandate.
Yeah, I think the 50 is a mandate, but the 10 is just a recommendation.
If I may add something to that, Mr. Biden, I referred to this a little bit at the beginning of the meeting. I am, I am anticipating that we may get a, a order from the attorney general and/or the governor stating that we are able to, for an emergency amount of time, run these meetings through teleconferencing. That may become something that becomes necessary. I do not, we currently have a letter from the attorney general that states that he believes that can be done. There is some question that was raised from all the workers around the state. Like you said, we had a little test run with Mr. Myers tonight to see how that might work. We're also live streaming, like Mr. Biden said, on Facebook, so people can attend without actually being physically present. We'll know more probably in the next two weeks, but we are working on ways that you may be able to attend this meeting without actually being physically present.
Now, we see the display there. It looks very dark and shadowy. Is that just because of the angle of the screen?
Maybe it's the people up there.
It really does.
I think it's the computer monitor because at the beginning of this meeting.
Yes.
I, I, yeah, and I shared it on a couple of Facebook pages so that the public could.
And it was crisp and clear?
It looks good. It looks well lit.
Okay.
And Ashley said the sound was good on it. Good.
Maybe we can, for some of us, we can actually use these tablets for other purposes than, I'm sure.
And a doorstep?
Some people think they're just a paperweight, but. I, I'm hoping it doesn't come, come to that and if, in two weeks, almost three weeks, and those are really, then we're really in dark days of three, three weeks. We're going to have to meet by video conferencing, so we'll, we'll, we'll hope for the best because that does not bode well for people in Mr. Bastancic circumstances. All right, Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I want to, want to thank all of the business owners who, who came in this evening. I know, especially in a time like this, that it's, you know, you're a bit nervous about going into a building with a bunch of other people, so I appreciate that they, you know, came out just to address council this evening. I know, I understand their concerns. Mr. Bastancic, I appreciate your, sharing your story. It's very moving and I think we all agree that we, you know, want to do whatever we can to support our local businesses. The one thing that I thought is, I think, none of us anticipated the closing of these businesses prior to, you know, yesterday's announcement. So I, for one, I had already done some, you know, not stockpiling like some people, but, you know, I've already done. but, you know, I've already done a significant amount of grocery shopping with the expectation that, you know, I'll be kind of hunkered down in my house for, you know, several days. So perhaps that's a reason, if some of the business owners were saying that they weren't seeing a large number of customers, perhaps people are trying to get through their, their stores of supplies before, you know, you don't want your food to go bad prior to going out and seeking it from a establishment that'll cook it for you. So I hope the business picks up, and I certainly will be supporting them through ordering, carryout, and, and delivery. I know that was one thing that wasn't mentioned, but whoosh, and I think there's Grubhub and DoorDash and a few options for meal delivery services as well. And yeah, that's all, so thank you all.
Mr. Ansel?
Yes, we are in uncharted waters in terms of the tragedies and the crisis that we're facing, and it's hard to really script any proactive type of plans out. It's certainly more reactive than planning and proactive, and that's always a, a very difficult situation to be within, because we're, you know, facing the unknown right now. This is a first ever, and when things are first, it's difficult to anticipate and respond appropriately, but we do have to continue to band together as a community and work through this process the best that we can, and it certainly is heartbreaking and devastating, and it, it's a major, major challenge for not only the US but for the world at this point in time. So putting things in perspective, again, have compassion for those that maybe aren't so fortunate and support and cooperate, and do, do abide by the cautions that are being propagated. It's very important, don't, I know a lot of people were very skeptical two to three weeks ago that this would go away, and it was a bunch of brouhaha, and we see where it's at today. So embrace its seriousness and really comply, and do limit the things that we're being recommended to limit as a precaution, because the sooner that we get through this, the better off we'll be overall. That's all I have, Mr. President.
I do note that our computer there timed out, so I don't know.
I don't know either.
All right.
Mr. Biden, before.
I can go look at it.
Before the group adjourns, I think there's something.
Well, we haven't been through all our, can I get through all my council people?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought Mr. Ansel was your last, I apologize.
No, I know, he likes to talk, but there's a couple other folks here that have, to be given an opportunity here.
Thank you.
Mr. Bastancic?
Battery die?
Just one thing, one, one thing I forgot to mention while I was talking to the group earlier. One of my servers brought this up, and she was saying if there was possibly some way the city could help not turning off someone's water if they're having trouble paying. She, she stated to me that, that was her biggest bill that she has, is her water bill. And she was worried, you know, she's having trouble paying, that she's going to come and shut it off. That's something we might be able to look at.
Yes, we, we will take those things under consideration, especially in these times.
If she was having problems, does she have to come to the city, or could you stand that up?
Why doesn't she contact the finance department, give a call in, and they'll get her to the right person to, to discuss that? Okay?
And Mr. Cavan?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I too would implore the public to abide by the governor's recommendations. Again, the biggest purpose would be to keep everyone safe, let's not forget that. Thank you.
Yeah, and the other thing is, we don't want to crush our limited resources we have in our medical field because if we can keep as many people from having to go to the hospital, the better we're going, going to do, because there's limited intensive care unit beds throughout the nation, so that's the other purpose, so. Anyways, yes, Mr. Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I wanted to get through my council people.
Absolutely, I didn't, didn't realize I was interrupting your sequence there. Just something that I know all of you would have an interest in, in the community as, as a whole. The governor had asked a judge to rule on moving the election till June 2nd. Mr. Dordia just saw on the phone here that it was denied. So the, the election is, is valid tomorrow, according to what we are seeing out of Columbus right now, so.
Is that a state judge?
I think it was Columbia Police Judge.
Why would they do that?
Yeah, they were filing in Franklin County.
I don't think they.
There's somebody that can appeal.
So please encourage people to vote.
I suppose they could, it's going pretty late. Unless they got an injunction right now.
So please encourage people to, to vote, because that is truly important, especially with representatives representing us in the state at, at issue, and also our school levy at issue, so. So that's what I wanted to let council know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, well, interesting times, and, you know, again, you know, get carryout, whether it's a downtown restaurant or a restaurant up north, or a restaurant that has a parking area, but these people need help, and hopefully it will do your part, but probably the best part is to keep your hands washed and keep them out of your eyes and facial area, and we should weather the storm pretty well, so. Thank you all for coming out, and hopefully, next time we meet, it will be with better times, so. I see Mr. Ansel move to adjourn, is there a second? Second, Mr. Cavan?
Good evening.
If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.